Hi. I'm sorry. It's on thirty one. I just passed Smith Valley Road. Uh huh, yeah. Just, just south of it, just. Yeah, there's a Burger King or something there and there's, well, there's a Walgreens. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Are you still looking for dog food? Yeah. Okay, all right, bye bye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Right, public comments?
We have Ron still muted though.
Yeah. I think I'm unmuted now.
Okay, there's some background noise, Ron.
Can you hear me now?
Sure, yes. All right, at this time, we open the meeting up for public comments. Anybody have a public comment at this time? All right, seeing none, the next order of business is nomination election of council president and council vice president.
Oh, hey, I'm sorry, I mean, John, sorry. Um, for public comment, I just wanted to say a couple things, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I wanted to say congratulations to both Whiteland and Center Grove High Schools on their fantastic football season. I think it would be easy to say that they represented Johnson County well and they had a super great season and were proud of their accomplishments. I also wanted to congratulate the RC coaches of Center Grove who won the in Mr. The Indiana Football Coaches Association Awards for coaches of the year. And another congratulations goes out to Ty Garrett for winning Mr. Indiana Cross Country for twenty twenty two, so. I think everybody's, I think our county is full of lots of great talent.
Okay, thank you, Moana. Also, I think along those lines, I want to congratulate and welcome. We have some new council members, this Pamela J. Burton, representing District One, Mr. John Dittmer from District Two, Mr. John Mahlers from District Four. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, let's get back to nomination and election of council president and vice president. Any discussion for council president this time or nomination?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Jonathan Taylor Myers as president.
Right, second. Nomination by John Myers.
Second.
Second by Ron Dear. All those opposed or all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Moving on to council vice president. Nominations open. Nominations for vice president.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Melinda Griesmer as vice president.
Nomination by John Myers for Melinda Griesmer, second.
I'll second that.
Oh. Second.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of Melinda Griesmer for vice president signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Melinda, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, John. Congrats to you.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to item C appointments, we have twenty total applicants, so we'll try to get through as quickly as possible, but everyone has an opportunity to speak and I hope that they do. So we have one nomination right now for the Pita Boa Property Tax Assessment Board. Miss Donna Zellner, is she here? Would you like to speak, man?
I'm not Donna. Mike Watkins, county assessor. I've got a couple of items on here, one of them is the Pita Boa appointment for the evening, as well as another thing, we'll get to that in a minute. I just want to recommend Donna's reappointment to the Board of Appeals. She has a wonderful history on the board. She has been or was for many years the Pleasant Township Assessor. She is a wonderful Realtor. She knows her business. I recommend, I can't recommend her.
I don't have to say anything after that. But thank you. No, I enjoy working on the board and yeah, I would like to be reappointed, you see.
Thank, thank you. I'm not addressing you singularly, but as we go through these board appointments, we're gonna, the council is going to be asking for a report from each of the boards, from the people that we appoint. So if we could do that like on a monthly or a quarterly basis, it would really be a good thing for us to keep track of what's going on.
Okay. That is not going to be a problem.
Okay, well, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Do you have any questions or?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to appoint Donna Zellner as the to the property tax assessment board of appeals.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Pam Burton made the motion and Melinda the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
I believe immediately next was the setting of the pay rate for board members.
Yes.
If you have any questions on that, I'm available to answer. Otherwise, I believe the rate is unchanged from the prior year, three hundred fifty dollars per day for members with either a level two or three designation and a hundred dollars per day for those without.
And she has the level two or three.
Donna has a level two, yes.
Okay. Right, it's not a change, correct?
That is not a change, correct? It's the same as it's been for a number of years.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second. All those in favor of the compensation as stated, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have two for the Johnson County Park Board. Timothy Edsall and Jeffrey Cummins. Timothy, want to come to the podium if you're here?
Is he online?
Anybody online, Timothy?
Yes, I, I am here online.
He's there online, okay. Timothy, do you have to say anything at this time?
Sure, I'd be glad to. I enjoy working on the park board with the other members. I thoroughly enjoyed working with Kevin as the park superintendent. We're doing some good things down there, so I would, you know, enjoy continuing to work in that capacity.
So where we can see his picture?
I tried hitting the video, it won't let me do, get on.
There.
Okay, Timothy, you've been with us for a while. How long have you been on the park board?
Yeah, I was thinking about that the other day, I think since twenty eighteen.
Okay, yes. All right, and then we have one other applicant, Jeffrey Cummins. Jeffrey, are you online or on?
Afternoon. My name's Jeff Cummings. I am a former employee of Johnson County, used to work at the park twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. I currently a semi-retired employee of Harrison County Hospital as the M T B. I'm a wildland firefighter, have been doing that for twenty years. I worked for the Wayne Hoosier National, sorry, Wayne National Forest and have also worked for the Hoosier National Forest. So enjoyed my time with the Joko Parks, worked for Brad as a laborer down there. I bought such a shoveler, but I did many things, shoveled, mowed, worked with the offenders, you name it, so. I thought it'd be nice to have somebody who actually worked there, had boots on the ground to be part of the park board, so. And I know this gentleman here, he and I are the, share the same gym together, so.
That's right.
That's it.
Um, all right.
And you went there from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one?
No, sir, I worked twenty nineteen to twenty twenty.
Okay.
Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion. All right, take nominations.
I'm going to nominate Dr. Edsall to be on the park board, I mean, with what he's doing with the Indian Creek Schools and his passion about parks and everything. I really like his vision and the direction that they're going.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those of Dr. Edsall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that seals that. Is there, is there just one position open?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, congratulations, Doctor Edsall.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to the Johnson County redevelopment. Go ahead, go ahead, Ron.
I'd like to thank Mr. Cummings for applying and will certainly keep in consideration for future opportunities.
Yes, yes, thank you, Ron.
For sure.
Okay, next in line is the Johnson County Redevelopment Commission, Arlie Money, Rob Henderson and Kristen Griffith. Mr. Money, are you here?
Good evening. My name is Lee Money. I'm an attorney in Greenwood. I'm a lifelong resident of Johnson County, live currently in White River Township. It's been my privilege to serve on the Johnson County Redevelopment Commission since its inception. I've been the secretary of that committee since its inception. Came to the county RDC after having served just over fifteen years on the Greenwood Redevelopment Commission. I was actually president of Greenwood Redevelopment Commission for most of that time. I wasn't president, I was vice president. It's been my pleasure to serve with county commissioners and Rob Henderson on that board this time. And appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve Johnson County on the Redevelopment Commission. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Robert Henderson?
Hi, good evening, Rob Henderson, residing in Franklin, Indiana. Appreciate your consideration for a reappointment to the Redevelopment Commission, Johnson County. Similar to Mr. Money, have been on the commission at your appointment since its inception, served recently, last couple of years as the president of the Redevelopment Commission with prior experience on the City of Franklin Redevelopment Commission, as well as two terms on county council. Any, any questions or comments?
What's your primary goal?
Primary goal is for the, for the county Redevelopment Commission to be the body or an organization that, that puts or places the county at the economic development forefront, along with the cities and towns in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or? Thank you, Rob.
Yep, thank you.
This Chris, Kristen Griffith?
Hello, my name's Christian Griffith. Thanks for the opportunity to, to be here. I'm looking for an opportunity to serve the county and community that I live in and that my wife and I have raised our children in. My experience and background is in construction. I own two businesses and we work in Johnson County almost daily. Also work in all the surrounding markets with engineers, architects, general contractors from both out of state and in state, so I think I have a unique perspective on what other communities are doing as well that I could bring to the table and offer those experiences to, to the group. So thanks again for the opportunity to be here and I hope you'll consider me.
Anybody have any questions?
I know, I was just going to say I'm looking at your resume here. You have a very, very impressive resume.
Thank you.
You're a licensed plumber, licensed H, you've got your HVAC license. Um. You've been self-employed. And I, I like the fact that you've got a history in the trades.
Yeah.
As a registered nurse, I kind of consider myself part of the trades too.
Sure, yeah.
Um, and I think that we need more representation in government from the trades.
No, thank you.
So I like.
Appreciate that.
Um, I like your, your credentials and I'd like to make a motion for you to be on, placed on one of those positions.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, motion's been made by, Moana, have a second?
Oh, wait, wait, yeah. Is there any other motions, I guess?
Well, there are three people that I had, I don't know if there are anymore or not. Yeah, well, are there any other applicants?
Yeah.
Okay, Moana, I'd like to open it up a little bit for discussion if I could.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah, thank you.
Any discussion among the council? As I understand, we have one appointment, correct?
Two.
Two, okay. Help me out, being a newbie here, how do we get to that?
Well. We have two, we had a council member on there at one time and we had this citizen on there at the same time. I think I mean with sixty nine, getting ready to take off and the RDC is still fairly new. I think that Rob Henderson and Lee Money has put a lot of work into the RDC and now it's just now getting ready to take off. I'd like to nominate Lee Money and Rob Henderson. Since they started this and got the ball rolling, I think they'd like to see some fruits of their labor. So I'd like to nominate Lee Money and Rob Henderson.
All right, council, any other discussion? I mean, does anybody have anything else to add? So I know Mr. Money, I'd like to put in my two bits here. I know Mr. Money has done a lot for the community and is familiar with the, the process, especially up in Greenwood, which most of our growth is going to come from that area. And I, I have witnessed Rob Henderson's passion for what he does for the community for the past four years and am duly impressed with Rob's efforts in the past. So I would tend to agree with those two.
John.
I agree with the comments you guys made.
Motion.
All right, so at this point in time, like to.
We have a motion by Melinda that we have to deal with, so either take action on her motion or she can withdraw it.
Do we have a second? So is there a second to Melinda's motion?
So I made the first motion, is there a second?
Is there a second? All right, hearing no second, then we'll move on. Is there another motion?
I'll second, oh no, you already seconded Tony's motion, correct?
Okay, so I had a motion from John Ed for Arlie Money and Rob Henderson and a, a second from Pam. Am I done correct or, or I'm sorry?
Mr. Dittmer.
Mr. Dittmer, that's, all right, second by John Dittmer. So vote is, all those in favor of Arlie Money and Rob Henderson signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? So those appointments are for Arlie Money and Rob Henderson, congratulations, gentlemen. All right, moving on, we have one for Edinburgh Town Economic Development Commission. Mr. Wade Watson and he could not be here tonight as Edinburgh's meeting is at the same time, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion though. Point, Watson, to the Edinburgh Economic Development Commission.
Motion by John Myers, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Ron Dear. All those in favor of Wade Watson for Edinburgh Town Economic Development Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, so Mr. Wade Watson is Edinburgh Town Economic Development Commission. Next one is Greenwood City Economic Development Board, Laura Jacquin, is Laura here? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Jack.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, welcome.
I'm Laura Jackwin. I've been a part of the Economic Development Commission for the last three years. Enjoyed very much working on the commission with, with Randy, Greg, Jerry, John. It's been a good experience. I want to be considered for reappointment. I live in Johnson County, have for the last thirty years. My husband and I own two businesses in Greenwood. We own Dino Villa and Cafe Euclid. We just opened Cafe Euclid in July. We're very involved with all the other business owners around us. Have nothing more than to see Greenwood grow, love everything that's happening around us. We've been business owners for eleven years. I'm so happy to be here tonight and just seeking a reappointment.
Thank you, thanks for talking to us. All right, so she is I'll entertain a motion for Laura for the Greenwood City Economic Development Board.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. By John Dittmers. So Laura is now the Greenwood City Economic Development Board and I don't want to mess up her last name again.
Yeah, you need to actually vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did not, just the motion, all right. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We're getting to be a long list here.
You're new to it.
So to go again here, motion by John Myers, second by John Dittmers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? What I said in the past. All right, so the Greenwood Public Library Board, we have two, Louis Gregory and Daniel K. Ryan. Judge Gregory?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Louis Gregory. I have been your appointee for the Greenwood Public Library Board for the past four years. I've enjoyed it immensely. It's an excellent group of people. The library is in very good hands. A lot of very innovative things are being done right now. I would appreciate the opportunity to continue in that position for another four years. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer them at this time.
What's the next big project for the library? Pardon me? What's the next big project for Greenwood Library?
Well, we're trying to get the renovation done. We're hopeful it'll be done by April. But it becomes an issue of primarily access, accessibility of, of the final materials for the, for the renovation. But most of the big stuff's done and a lot of the little stuff.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is Daniel K. Ryan. Mr. Ryan? Mr. Ryan online? All right, hearing none. Open nominations for Greenwood Public Library Board.
I nominate Lou Gregory.
Second.
Motion by Ron Dear, second by John Myers, Louis Gregory, Greenwood Public Library Board. All those in favor, say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Congratulations, Judge Gregory. Next is the Local Alcohol Beverage Commission Board. We have one, three, four applicants for that air, that board. First is Mr. David Mar. Mr. Mallor here. Mr. Mallor online. Okay, I'll go next to Mr. Bob Lynn. Pardon me?
Yep, there you go.
That's Mr. Armbrister. All right, we'll go ahead with Mr. Armbrister since he's online here. Hello, Mr. Armbrister, can you hear us?
Yep, here you just go, thank you.
All right, so you're, got your name in the hat for those, I'm sorry, the Local Alcoholic Beverage Commission, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Would you like to give us a few words on what you, why you were seeking that position?
Sure, I've, I've lived in Johnson County ever since I graduated from Franklin, Franklin College. And I just saw this as an opportunity to kind of get involved with the government here in, in my town and kind of help things progress.
All right, you have anything else?
Nope, not at this time.
Again, all, all of the applicants and, and some of them are quite extensive, but all of the applicants. some of them are quite extensive, but all of the applicants have nice applicants or applications and resumes. So I want to congratulate you on that. So. The next person is George Hall. Mr. Hall.
Thank you. I've lived in Johnson County most of my life, graduated Franklin High School, spent twelve years in the military in two different branches. And I still reside in Greenwood. I repair and calibrate ventilators. So for the last three years, I've traveled around the state taking care of, there's only twelve people in the state certified to touch them. So not very many people, but I just wanted to get involved in my community and give back. It's been a good community. I think I put in for a couple committees, I just, wherever the need is best, put me there, put me to work. Thank you. Any questions?
You must have been really busy during COVID.
Uh, yes and no.
Oh, okay.
It's just not, I don't know, everybody donated, like all the colleges were shut down and out of state places. Manufacturers that had stuff on the, they did donate it, but I ran around working on stuff that really never got used. And the government surplus ones, so they have a big warehouse, the federal government does. They're a contractor that calibrates those, starts on one end of the building, and by the time they get around five years have passed. So most of the ventilators they sent out were behind on, they, they, they were failing, they were killing people. I had to fix them.
Well, thank you, sir. Okay, I'll go back to Bob Lynn. Bob Lynn? David Maher?
Yes, I'm here. I'm unable to access my video because the host needs to engage it.
Okay, sir, could you identify yourself and your place of residence?
I am David Maurer. I live in Bargersville, and I've had the pleasure and the honor to serve on the ABC Board for the last four years. I'm on both Board One and Board Two. I've been almost a lifelong resident of Johnson County, graduated Franklin College. And I've served in the communities of Johnson County ever since graduated out of college. So been able to be a contributor and be a faithful board member to the ABC Board over the last, again, four years. And I would really appreciate a reconsideration for me to be nominated and appointed again for the upcoming calendar year.
Hey, sir, thank you for speaking with us. Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Maher. Okay, let's try Bob Lynn one more time. No response. Jeff, no response. Online, okay.
I just want to say they all are quite impressive, and they all, I'm sure, would do a great job on the board.
Yes, I also wanted to make note here that Mr. Hall had also put his application in for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Alternate, is that correct? Yes. All right, so at this time, I'll open up appointment nominations for the Local Alcoholic Beverage Commission Board.
I'll nominate David Maurer, the incumbent.
I would second that motion.
A nomination by Pam, second by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Mr. Maher. Does it doesn't, thank you. The next item is Board of Zoning Appeals, which is an alternate position. And we have two applicants, George Hall and Paul Claude Filter. Mr. Hall, are you in the audience or online? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's a different position, so if you'd like, or if you're not, if you don't have anything else.
As I said, I applied to a couple. I just, wherever the need is the greatest, put me to work.
Okay, all right.
I'm willing to give back to a community that done so much for me, so maybe the man I am today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate that sentiment. We need more people involved in our community.
How Claude Feller? Pardon me, had conflict? Okay. All right, so at this time, I'll take the nomination for appointment for Board of Zoning Appeals Alternate. Looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to, for George Hall to serve on that board.
Have a motion by Melinda.
Can we take a brief minute? Mr. Hall, are you, do you own real estate?
No. Oh, well, my own house. I mean, I have a house.
Can we take like five minutes where we look at something? If you want to take a different board position?
All right, take a motion for a five-minute recess.
A second.
Motion by Pam, second by John, five minutes. And help me out here. Board of Zoning Appeals Alternate was Mr. Hall, and the motion was made by Melinda Griesmer. Is that correct?
Yes, I made that first motion.
Okay. All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Melinda Griesmer, second by John Mallers. I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
But. What was, well, I have, what was Adams? What did he find out?
We're good. Everything's fine.
Okay.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Mr. Hall, congratulations. Board of zoning fields alternate. Okay, so the next appointment is for County Plan Commission Council, council member. I would open that up for.
Who's on that now?
I am currently the alternate, and it was Pete Ketchum in the past, and I would be interested in.
I nominate John T.
Pardon me, go ahead, Ron.
I'd like to nominate John T.
A nomination by Ron Deere for Jonathan T. Myers. Do I have a second?
I'll second the Jonathan Taylor Myers.
Yeah, we've got to come up with a designation for all these jobs.
My head's swimming. All right. So. All those in favor, Jonathan T. Myers for County Plan Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Moving on to County Plan Commission Alternate, council member. I would like to nominate Ron Deere.
Second.
So we have a motion by Jonathan T. and a second by John Ed. For Ron Deere for County Plan Commission Alternate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Ron is County Plan Commission Alternate. All right, next, next is Emergency Management Advisory Council. Council member. Appointment.
What, didn't Ron Deere do that before?
The.
Yes.
No.
I had the Emergency Management Advisory.
Yeah, I'm the Emergency Management Advisory Council Member now from the council.
All right, well, I'll nominate Ron for, back to the Emergency Management Advisory as a council member.
Yes. Nomination by Melinda. Motion, do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, so. Ron, congratulations.
Thank you.
So Solid Waste Management District Council Member.
He was it before.
That was me, but I'm going to nominate John Dittmers, a solid waste district.
Motion by John Ed for John Dittmers. Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for John Mallers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Okay.
That's a crab.
Yeah, sorry about that. No time for. Okay, so the next item is item D, which is routine manners. This is on our consent agenda, so this is items normally that are done by a single motion. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consenting agenda.
I'll make the, I'll be the first motion to approve the agenda as listed.
Route. The consent agenda.
Routine, I'm sorry, the routine consent agenda. I'll be that first one.
A motion by Melinda, second by John Ed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Right, next item is from Johnson County CVT, which is the Convention Visitor and Tourism. Mr. Koski.
Good evening, I'm Ken Koski, Director of Tourism. First of all, would like to welcome the new members and congratulate the new officers. Looking forward to a great year. Thank you. Um, I'll report more to you in a quarter, but we're working on our annual report, and all the numbers look really good. We're going to break every record that we set in last year's record-setting year. And just wanted to show you, this is the state festival guide that just came out, and our area is on the cover for the first time ever. So that's something we're very proud of. And you, some of you may have seen, we unveiled the bicentennial alley with two hundred colorful stars next to the art craft. That was another art project that we helped fund. So that's just a few of the things that we're working on.
You guys do great work.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? So going forward, and I think I stated this before. We're going to be asking the boards for more information, and not to pick on you, John. But there are certain duties of the board for reporting. And it's by state statute, and it's to the, to your board. We would like to see that information at the council level, if we could, please.
So what exactly are you looking for from us?
So there is like, I can state six dash one dash two dash four A through G. Is most particular what I'm looking for, and it's just a simple accounting. You guys are already doing it, but it would make us more aware of how the funds are being spent.
Okay, and would you like that sent via email, or how would you like to receive that?
Amy, would you mind if I had him send it to you? Okay, if you could send it to Amy, please.
Certainly, we'd be glad to do that.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. Or better yet, I'll open it up for discussion. Anybody have anything they'd like to say?
I have a question that doesn't relate to this ordinance, but it relates to something I heard at the state level that they're looking to have more state funds for tourism. Are you aware of that kind of?
Yes, that's been an ongoing thing as long as I've been a county tourism official, and we lag behind the other surrounding states to such a degree that we just can't compete on a state level. So we, as a county, certainly support what they're trying to do, and it looks like they'll get more, maybe not everything they asked for this year, but they will receive more.
That's good.
And as, and as a trend, are you seeing any trends? In your.
Yeah, on a county level, we are outperforming the competition. Our collections, which were at five hundred and forty-seven thousand in twenty nineteen, only dipped slightly in twenty twenty, and then in twenty twenty-one, they were eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. This year, with one month still to go, we've already surpassed that by five percent. So we'll probably finish there well over nine hundred thousand. So our advertising impressions are up, our hotel stays are up. Our economic impact shows everything's up eight point four percent. So all of our trends as a county are doing very well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Questions? Thank you.
What's your current balance?
In the county funded, it's almost one million. So that basically, we've got cash on hand to fund our entire budget for this year. Our, our national or international association recommends we keep at least a minimum of half of our operating budget in reserve. So with tonight's approval, that will be at approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will put us comfortably in that position.
Entertaining a motion, please.
I'll make a motion for the additional appropriation of the innkeeper's tax and the amount of operating expenses and the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Motion by Pam Burton, second by Johnny. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Sorry, Betsy, I'm catching up.
Betsy Swearingen, Director of the Health Department. I'm here to ask for, just to appropriate some funds from our crisis co-ed grant for the, the school liaison position, the FICA and PERF that are associated with that. On health insurance over time, some education and public info materials and advertising.
Okay, and this is a grant?
This is a grant. This is a two-year four hundred and, actually, it ends up being about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant. So we're just appropriating some of those funds that we have on hand right now.
Would you go ahead and wrap in the local health maintenance, too?
Sure, that, well, the, I didn't know if we can. The local health maintenance is just asking that we bump up that part-time rate to thirty dollars an hour because it, we can't compete with getting a paramedic, paying them twenty dollars an hour. So we're asking if we can bump that paramedicine or paramedic position up to thirty dollars an hour.
Yeah, I think we can take both two and three.
Okay.
On item number two, Betsy.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you mention that you want the salary retro to twelve twenty-nine twenty?
I did not mention it, but yes, thank you. I'm sorry, we would like that retro, please.
All right, that's, you know, I'm three, that's thirty dollars from what, two thirty?
It was twenty dollars an hour to thirty dollars an hour. We just can't get any response for somebody to help us out. It's a competitive business.
Hey, any other questions for the Swerms? Entertaining a motion.
I'll make that first motion to increase the paramedic pay from twenty dollars to thirty dollars an hour. And then.
Item number two first.
Oh, okay, and I'll make a motion to approve item number two, and then it was number three for the paramedic.
Correct. All right, motion by Melinda, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John Mallers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody.
See you in a little bit here. All right, so for the next item is drug-free community. Ms. McMahon?
Yeah, hi, it's Michelle McMahon. I am the coordinator for Drug Free Johnson County. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. I am just asking for appropriations for a few categories in our administrative funds. Just so we can keep doing what we're doing, we'll be back in probably either February or March. I believe I'm going to come back in February to ask for our grantees and in support of getting our funds out there for prevention. prevention, education, treatment, intervention, and law enforcement. So.
Thanks for all you're doing. This is a federal grant that's been in existence for a long time, right?
These are court fees.
These are court fees assessed for alcohol and substance abuse charges. And then they are put into an account that then comes to Drug Free Johnson County as the local coordinating council for Johnson County. So all of the funding that we receive comes from local court fees. So this is not technically a grant, but it is. We do have to meet criteria that ICJI does set for us. And I think that we're probably looking at granting out around close to $85,000 this year that were fines that were collected last year. Last year in 2022, we granted into our community, putting back into the community for these over 95,000. So we have seen a reduction, unfortunately. That's good and bad because if we're seeing less fees be assessed and collected, then that means potentially that we're seeing less crime and less people who are being arrested. Or it could mean that less fees are actually being charged to someone who is being arrested. So we're kind of following up on that. That kind of goes to our local judges and our court systems for what, what they are assessing, because obviously we would, we will benefit as a community if we can utilize those funds to prevent and intervene in those who are breaking the law by alcohol and substance misuse. So.
Any questions for Ms. McMahon? Right, entertain a motion. I'll move to approve as presented. Motion by John Ed. Five second.
Second motion.
Second by Pam Burton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lauren Ryanerson, Judge Barton, Bosia.
Hi, Lauren Ryanerson, Bosia Director. I have items number five and six. I need to appropriate funds. So for number five, it's our guardianship fee account. This is a fund where we make money monthly on some of our clients. And so we need to use that money and have that appropriated. And then number six is our Bosia grant for this year of 66,000 and for the salary to retro back to 1229.
I would like to have some discussion. True. I've been here since the birth of this program and I will commend you. It is an amazing program.
Thank you.
Any support that we can give you, I for one will be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Now, after saying that, I do have a question.
Yeah, yeah.
On the funds that you receive, I see, you know, this is for your salary, your FICA, your PERF. I don't see where the grant is providing for the health insurance like all of the other grants are.
The commissioner said that they would pay for that moving forward through their budget.
The commissioner's budget?
Yes, I went to a meeting and had that approved.
Can you explain why it's, it's not being paid from the grant if it's allowable? And I'm assuming it is since it's payable. Can you explain?
So typically, the grant is for $75,000. We only got 66. Moving forward, we're probably going to get less money throughout the years. And we are not going to have enough money to operate on. And that's why we've been using the guardianship fee account as well. So this was just to help, you know, with that money and so we could operate. And then I plan on coming back to you guys this year to see if I could get my assistant director's salary paid moving forward through the county versus the grant. So we can just use the grant as our operating expense.
But it is allotted in the budget to pay for the health insurance, correct?
It was in the past, not for this year.
Okay, so you would not, you didn't have the option?
No.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd agree with Ms. Burton that this is such a valuable program. I don't know for new council people, do you know what this program is, what it does? So it's a volunteer advocates for seniors and incapacitated adults. Am I right?
Yes, correct.
How about that? So why is the, why is it being reduced and who is reducing it?
It's through the state and there's more and more programs that are being developed throughout Indiana. So there's the increase for the money to go out to all the programs is going to become less because there's going to be more programs throughout the state. So that's why they're going to have to reduce it.
So eventually will that come to you?
It's from the sounds of it, yes.
And, and to Superior One and, and to Shelby County also, Shelby.
Shelby County gives us $10,000 every year. So we'll be getting that as well.
Another question, more salaries. Are they mandated by the state? Are those set?
So the county pays for mine and then the grant will pay for the assistant director. It is based on whatever program, whatever you're allowed to do in your county. It is not set by the state.
Okay, so it's determined by people directing the program?
Right, right.
Okay.
Thank you. Absolutely.
The salaries were actually set by the state official that the county had contracted out, so.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? That'll help.
Well, there you go.
Yeah.
Darn the bad luck.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda items five and six with the exception of travel and training be reduced to $1,000.
Second. Motion by Pam Burton, second by John Ed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do. All right, next item up is statewide 911.
Heath Brandt, I'm on One Director. First thing I have is something that we originally had, I'd submitted with my budget last year, but sort of a miscommunication, so it was taken out. We kind of talked about this. I know for the new members that you're not aware of this, we talked about it during budget hearings about getting this added back in. I was a field service administrator, basically just due to our specialized types of technologies, the systems that we have. Basically to have somebody to help manage our IT work. We're currently working with the county's IT. But also someone to manage our, the county's fleet of radios. Right now we have about 1,500 radios and service in the county and right now we do the programming for those radios. City Greenwood has had somebody that's doing theirs, but tomorrow's his last days. Those radios will come back to us as far as maintaining all of those. And right now I am currently the only one that can do that. So so whenever something happens, it takes me out of the office for, for long periods of time. So just some of the managers are technology and it's not just for us. It's also would be for emergency management to ensure that all the emergency technology that we have is in good working order.
I have a couple of questions if I may. Heath. You had stated that budget time, there was, there was some reason it was removed. Can you elaborate on that just a little bit? And part two, the question, how do you stand on the positions out there now? I know at budget time this year that you have a lot of positions that were not filled. So by adding yet another new position, how are you on the positions that are currently not filled up?
And so the miscommunication was the talks with commissioners were basically strictly an IT person. And I think there was a misunderstanding that that's what this was as opposed to some of those energy IT work and radio work. There was, there was a concern about the, the amount of workload if we didn't combine those two responsibilities. So in the job description that I submitted, it had both of them, but there was a misunderstanding as to what was in that. So so it was, I was told to take it out.
So this will all be brand new money in addition to?
Yes. And, and as far as the positions, you know, we were, we were good at the end of the year. I've lost three so far since Christmas. Just had another one submit a resignation today. There's completely separate positions as opposed, you know, when you have your dispatcher positions based off of this support staff position that we have. So we, we've got some gaps to fill. We got a couple of people in training, but we have, we have some applicants that we'll be interviewing here very shortly.
Thank you. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
The 911 board did have a discussion about the field service administrator and they were supporting that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions for Heath?
Did you want to take both of them or do you want to do these separate?
I think we do item seven by itself. So entertain.
There's a and pardon me?
Okay.
I can begin, I'm okay with it.
All right. Oh, we need to talk about seven.
So seven B, it, last year we, we made a purchase of a new server. This is just, we're going to swap some equipment out to give us some more space. There was a this kind of undersized, if you will. So we ran it, we, it was kind of a miscalculation on the amount of space that was in the amount of load that was going to be put on the, the new server that we purchased. So this is going to give us more than, more than we need. Well, I can't say more than we need. It's going to give us what we need in order to get all of our systems back onto this new server. So.
So clean, clean this up a little bit for me. So item B is adding 2,31777.
No, so, so that so if you're looking at the.
Should be C on the bottom.
Yeah.
On the third item there where he's adding the 5783679.
And, and two, I just want to, I'll add that, that job description was submitted and classified.
So he, that, that's back to A, the job.
Yeah, that, yeah, yes. Yeah, that job description was submitted as.
It was not submitted with the budget. It was pulled. Originally you would account for it and then you did.
Yeah, so that, that was, that was the other part of that is that, with that misunderstanding, the, prior to the budget hearings, the job description did not get submitted for classification. So we really couldn't assign a salary to it, but it's been, it's been done now. Classified as a PAP three. And then in the salary study.
One other question from an FTE perspective, sounds like you're three, you've got three. I don't know, I mean, how many are short now? You have three or?
I've got, I think. So we have, we have four openings. Well, we will have four of them. I have one, I have two that have a couple more weeks left and then.
So is there any way of creating any efficiencies as far as consolidation of duties and doing a, a four for three or something along that line, making up numbers when I do that. But in other words, to save some overhead there to offset this new position. That's where my mind goes.
To, to take from the number of dispatchers that we have to.
Consolidate maybe duties some way or not. I'm, I'm just asking the question.
Really, it's not. We're, I mean, we're, we're spread pretty thin as far as our, our dispatcher are concerned.
And then my last question is, was the 57,000 cap expense, was that not accounted for at all in the budget? Or was that, is that new?
That is new. Yes, that, that would be an additional appropriation to, to pay for the equipment that we're, we're wanting to swap out some equipment with some more memory for the, in the new server.
So C is yet additional, more new money, correct?
Yes, out of, out of the, out of the 1222.
Okay.
Any other questions? So moving on, entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by John Ed, second by John Mallers. All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is that for A, B, and C?
Yes.
Okay.
A, B, and B. All right, we have eight and nine here.
Good evening. Lori Myers, Juvenile Community Corrections Director, and I am covering eight, eight and nine together. Are related. At the time of the budget hearings for this year, I had believed the midpoint for the special occupation therapist. We were kind of honoring a amount of 691. Later found out that I was off on that figure. And probation program therapist was set at 75704. We recently for 2023 hired a new program therapist through community corrections, but that individual is newer to that field. And so she started, is going to be making 59,999 or $60,000. That gives us back or reverting back from what was approved by this council for this calendar year of $9,100. With that reverted money, we would like to correct the miscalculation for the therapist out of the juvenile court that is also under my supervision. So instead of the reverting that $9100 back, we're asking to bring that back under the juvenile court to give that therapist the, the amount of money that we should have calculated in the budget in the first place. So.
But it's actually a smaller figure, correct?
It is, yes.
And you want the salary retro for both items?
Yes.
To 1229?
I believe, yeah, 1229.
So this is basically just reshuffling numbers based on?
Yeah.
What you found out.
And I understand it makes it look a little different because it's from one agency to another, but when it goes back to the general fund, we're just reallocating that to.
Scares me that I get that.
I know, absolutely. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Lori. Does anybody have any other questions?
No, I, I remember proof.
I'll make a motion to approve items eight and nine as presented.
Second.
Motion by Pam Burton, second by John Deadmer. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all. Welcome to the new members.
So. Away from the canyon.
Nope. Irresistible.
Item number 10.
Yeah. Yep, just 10.
Hello, Sheena.
Sheena Johnson, Court Administrator. This is actually appropriation of a really good grant we were awarded. It's actually a $750,000 grant. It's, has a $1 million budget over four years. Our match is 25%, which is in, in-kind services. So it's $250,000, but it's in salaries that we're already paying. So it's not additional. And we're just waiting for, it's a federal grant. So we're just waiting for the federal liaison to approve our budget. But we're thinking, you can see here that they've got two full-time positions, right? We're thinking now we might reduce that to one full-time position, call it a problem-solving mentor coordinator and then eliminate the other full-time position and make it a part-time position or maybe a couple of part-time positions or mentor positions within the problem-solving courts. So with three problem-solving courts, drug court, behavioral health court, and reentry court. And plus, we're, we're working on a juvenile problem-solving court as well. So this, this money will assist with all of those courts. Any questions?
I have questions.
Go ahead.
Just a couple. So both of those are new positions. This is new money, correct?
Yes, this is, yeah, this is grand money.
Okay.
Yep.
How long was, is the grant for, Sheena?
Four years.
Four years. I do see where you've included the health insurance. Thank you. I think that's kind of important to the general fund.
Right.
To do that. So looking down the road for these new employees, is this grant going to be sustainable or is this? so looking down the road for these new employees, is this grant going to be sustainable or is this a one-time shot? Or do you know?
I don't know at this time. Um, this is the first time that we've gone out for something this large. Um, I think we're one of twenty-six in the nation that got it. So it was pretty prestigious. I don't think anyone expected us to get it. So, kudos to, um, Emily and, uh, you remember Emily, our grant administrator and Angela and, um, Mindy for putting that all together.
So I'm assuming when you, you switch this around again.
We'll come back.
Come back.
Absolutely. I was just giving you a heads up that it's likely to be reduced to one full-time position and then we'll take, um, whatever's left in the other one, plus whatever's left from the frames that we won't need because it'll be part-time and put it into a part-time line.
And so in the future, just deal with whatever happens with the grant and the employees is all you can do at this point, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like with the council's approval, I'd like to be able to approach, uh, and with the commissioner's approval, approach some of our departments and, uh, people like Sheena, who has a really good grasp of these grants and, uh, see if we can't formulate a way to make the grant statements to the council a little easier.
Okay.
So that we know when it starts, when it ends.
Sure.
How much it's for, how it's going to impact us, you know, because that cliff that we always approach with these graphs and have to then replace.
Right.
You know, can sometimes catch us by surprise.
Okay.
So with council's approval.
Yeah, that's a good. You can't have too much information for greater concern.
Okay. Well, and thank you all for what you're doing.
I'll make a motion to approve item number ten on the agenda as presented. That's not retroactive, correct?
No, nobody's been hired yet.
Okay.
Motion by Pam Burton, second by John, John Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So eleven through fourteen.
Um, hi, I'm Angela Morris, Court Services Director and Chief Probation Officer. Um, for those that don't know, back in February of two thousand twenty-two, um, corrections and probation became court services. Um, just a little history there. Um, on number eleven, the opioid response, um, grant eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen is the same grant and the same position. There are, each one addresses a different year. And so with Amy's help, we are cleaning up those grants, zeroing the, zeroing them out and asking for the appropriations for this year to spend them. And the only one we need to retro would be number twelve, retro that to December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and this physician did not need insurance. Um, she had it elsewhere.
So going forward, when it comes to budget hearing, you're going to be including this in your next year's budget?
Right. Um, well, we won't be, we'll include the twenty twenty-three, whatever. Hopefully we get the, the twenty twenty-four one also.
Okay, any additional questions? For Angela? Anything else, Angela?
Not on those four.
Okay, so eleven through fourteen is what we're considering right now. So I consider motion for eleven through fourteen.
My commercial. Um, oh, Ron, was he going to do that? Go ahead.
Speak up.
So moved motion to approve ten through fourteen.
Right.
And the retro.
Yeah.
I'm not catching all of it.
Very eleven. Just eleven, not ten.
Yeah, eleven through fourteen.
So that motion was made with the retroactive to December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is that correct, Amy?
That's the number twelve.
Just on number twelve.
Twelve fifteen twenty-two.
Twelve fifteen twenty-two.
Number twelve.
Okay, all right. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion by Ron Deere, second by Pam Burton. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Number fifteen is our community corrections grant that the Department of Corrections, um, gives us. I would like to let you know that we had an increase of over two hundred thousand dollars this year from VOC. Um, these are, A through double Q are just appropriating, um, the monies into the funds. We can spend them.
You were just, just awarded this grant current.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats.
And these salaries are retro to twelve twenty-nine twenty-two. Okay, so you want to carry fifteen and sixteen?
Yeah, and then double I through double Q are title changes.
We're going to take sixteen to.
Yes, please, if you could combine fifteen and sixteen.
Sixteen is our project income. Um, when we did the grant, when we wrote for the grant this past spring, um, we did not have the salary study numbers to include in that. And so that's what, um, A through double G is, and along with title changes to match.
So, so you're, this was budgeted, but you are based on the salary study numbers and figures, you're changing titles and switches numbers.
Correct.
Correct, same amount of money? No.
No, because the salary study increased. And so we tried to figure in what we thought the spring it would be, but we didn't know, nor did we know what raises, um, what percentage of raise the council would recommend us.
But you've moved things around to cover that correctly. I mean, you're not taking any additional money from anywhere. It's all still in this grant, correct?
Project number sixteen isn't a grant, so I don't.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes.
Yeah, that's project income. It's not general fund. It's, it's a fee-based account.
Fee-based account. Okay. So the point I'm trying to make is you have the dollars.
Yes.
Okay. And that's retro to twelve twenty-nine twenty-two.
Yes, Sam.
Okay.
Can you go ahead and take seven, what seventeen two?
No. And I, I'm asking for a title change.
Make a motion to approve, um, fifteen, the Community Corrections Grant, A, A through double A, H, approving those changes, and then the title changes from double I to double Q. Those title changes. And then on sixteen, the Community Corrections Account one-one-two-two, making the salaries retro to December twenty-ninth, um, from A to double G. And with that, though, um, the title changes for the positions, V through then double G. Did I get it all?
Do you want to do seventeen also?
Uh, let's come back for seventeen.
Okay.
Also, the salary is going to be retro on number fifteen, going back to twelve.
Oh, yes, making that salary retro to December twenty-ninth for, um, fifteen and then sixteen as well.
Okay. Good job, Melinda, on that motion. I hear a second.
That was a mouthful. Second.
Yeah, waiting for a second.
Second.
We're just making you sweat.
Yeah, a second. I thought maybe we were going to do that motion again.
Yeah.
Motion carries. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You didn't want to do it again. All right. So what's next, gang?
Seventeen.
Yeah, seventeen. It's just a title change.
All right.
I'll make a motion to, um, for number seventeen, account one zero zero one dash one three eight, to change the title from probation officer to probation officer slash assistant director.
I would like, is that going to increase salary at some point or just taking on additional responsibilities?
Um, there will be a supplemental with it that I believe we already have built in. Um, and it'll be some responsibility. It's a title to reflect the duties that have been held already.
I, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, right, in seventeen? Motion?
We need a second on that.
Oh, you've already made a motion. I'm sorry.
I did it first.
Pardon me?
I did it first. So we need a second.
Okay. Motion by Melinda.
Second.
Second by John Deadners. All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The item eighteen, J, C Surveyor Certification. Want, everybody want to take a ten-minute break or?
For the record, Greg Cantwell, Johnson County Surveyor, uh, here today requesting a appropriation from our forty-nine oh five account, which is the Johnson County Surveyor Certification Alcohol Average Permit Fund. Um, that's the fees that we collect when we verify addresses on alcohol permits. Uh, it's collected into this fund. What we're requesting is to be able to use ten thousand of that for our watershed update advertising.
Will that be on billboards or how are you?
I think so.
I'll make a motion to approve that, um, ten thousand dollars moved over for the advertising for account forty-nine oh five for the Johnson County Surveyor.
Motion by Melinda.
Sorry.
Second by John Ed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. So the next one is item F, which is, uh, approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one. Resolution authorizing the Johnson County Auditor to make payments to vendors via electronic funds transfer using the automatic clearinghouse. Is this a public meeting or is this just a?
You don't need public comment on this.
Okay. All right. So it entertained it. Go ahead.
I'm familiar with resolution. Uh, it's pretty much just standard operating procedure. And I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one, a resolution authorizing the Johnson County Auditor to make payments to vendors via electronic funds transfer using the automatic clearinghouse.
Motion by Pam, second by Melinda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Pardon me? Linda. So all the new business. Council liaison list, and we have three new members. So if you see the attachment on the, in your. So I kind of want to brush through a few things on that. I think that the further we get tonight, and then perhaps we make our final determinations at the next meeting for liaisons. But, uh, is anybody else in agreement with that? That, as to how to approach that.
No, you're, you're saying we keep the same list that we had before, but give the new council members, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there's been some changes, you know, uh, that have been requested. And then, of course, Pete Catcher, here, here's one, here's an example. Planning and zoning, uh, kind of goes, I was the alternate to Pete, Pete Catchem is no longer on the council. So, uh, then that normally goes to, you know, the person that's been the alternate. However, that's not a rule. I would like to be considered for that planning and zoning, um, appointment. Or, or actually the liaison for that. Uh, but it makes no difference to me, uh, as I'm serving on there anyway. But I just thought that it would kind of kill two birds with one stone, since I'm doing that anyway. Um, I'll, I'll keep going here. Um, there, the, the county park. Um, I believe that there was some interest by Ron Deere to take county park. And then, uh, it was thought that a good thing to do would be to give the prosecuting attorney to John Mahlers, uh, because of, uh, some of the things that John, you may be involved with, you know, State Board of Accounts.
His expertise.
Yeah, his expertise.
You say so.
Yeah, I mean.
No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, these are.
That'd be fine.
These are throwing these.
Just throwing them out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, John, you go ahead. You, I, I know you had some thoughts on this too. And then Pam, you have some thoughts. Melinda, please, uh, jump in here. Yeah. Uh, Ron Deere, if you could, please.
Sure.
My. I'm sorry.
Well, there was some additional suggestions that the CIT go over to, uh, Jim, and who are we talking about for Jim? Is that which John?
So you're saying that one of the Johns would go into Jim Easton's, uh, position. We'd mark out Jim and then put either John Mahlers or, uh, John Deadmers or?
Yeah.
Okay. So I, here, here's the thing about all this. I mean, we have so many, uh, different solutions to this. And really, it's, uh, if you have a need or you have something that really interests you in the future, if you could just, I guess the way to do it would be, let's just, uh, send Amy our thoughts at first and then let her, uh, that way we've got a, uh, yeah, yeah, I think that would be great. Is there by any agreement with that?
Well, John, there is one correction. Uh, I am on the Johnson County nine-one-one and it was shown under you.
Yeah, we could go ahead and move that one to, uh, to Ron Deere, the county nine-one-one. Good. But if you could email her, that'd be good, just to follow up on it.
Just so I'm clear, you want us to email Amy on, I realize that anyone can reach out to any of the board members, but you want us to email Amy on what we are personally interested in?
Yes.
And then she will start with the decisions that you guys have already made and rework the, rework, work. And also, I'm sorry, but if anyone has a preference, they could also email Amy as well.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
John, there is one that we need to do immediately because there could be a meeting coming up, and that's for the ARPA representation, which is on a liaison. It's a representation, and I would like to nominate Pam.
For what?
For which one was that?
ARPA.
Oh, the ARPA committee.
Yeah, ARPA is not on a, the liaisons. It's a formal, uh, there are three members on the council that serve on the ARPA committee. Pam has been there for, you know, all those meetings. So I'd like to just Pam.
All right. Duly noted.
That's it.
I think that's a good idea.
I think that's a commissioner appointment anyway. So we need to talk with him about that.
Adam, is that, is that a commissioner appointment?
Um.
And they don't like me.
I'm teasing.
Yeah, we'll get to that one when we get to it.
Yeah. Because we could possibly have a meeting in January and that correct, Adam?
Well, if we do, we'll just be down one member.
I think they'll survive.
Meeting, it'll be fine.
I mean, uh, just for the ever enter, information of the new members, there are three, currently three council members and three commissioners that serve on the ARPA committee. They are just an advisory committee, uh, that they come to a conclusion and then they give it to the commissioners. But it ultimately is the commissioner's responsibility to act. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so wha- what has happened is that Rob Henderson has, uh, is no longer there, so there'll be one position that's open for that.
So that's automatically Mr. Deadner's name?
That was easy.
I think we're just.
So you're saying that everybody should put in what they would like to Amy, let her.
What you're interested in.
Yeah. With it, you know? Yeah, and ta- and take into consideration for the new members, if you could please take into consideration and look at the, at the people that are no longer here. If you could look at their, their items specifically.
If you had, that would help. You know, three of us put in for the same departments.
Right.
It's just, we're not getting anywhere at all. Well, I think it's just creating more work for her.
Well, we'll just let Amy decide.
But there you go. You just figure it out and just tell us what we have.
It's like, that's a lot of responsibility.
No, well, I was just hopeful that we could come to something better than what we have tonight because they really haven't had an opportunity to look at this liaison list and give it consideration. And having gone through a meeting, you, they, they've seen some people. So it, it, it's really just going to be just a little bit farther uh, where, where it comes to the conclusion next February than it is now, but at least it'll be in a better place where we can make some decisions.
And I am, and I am assuming Amy will review the, the requests with the board president to present any, you know, any suggestions, any changes or anything that, you know.
Yes.
Prior to the next meeting.
Yes. All, all she's going to be doing is just compiling, so we'll, we'll put together. All right. So any other, uh, old or new business? So I want to congratulate the.
Oh, excuse me.
How you can get.
Oh, now you finally show up.
I've been back here. I've been in attendance. Kevin Walls, Johnson County Commissioner. I always get yelled at by Pam when I don't do that. Welcome all you new members. Uh, some are familiar faces. Uh, now I just wanted to bring up, I talked to you about it earlier, John, on Mike Orders, our financial consultant. Falls under the commissioner's budget, but we would like to look at maybe moving it on the council's budget. So you have a professional services line at him, I'm sure. So just food for thought. It doesn't have to be decided tonight, but maybe just think about that because it's more under your guys' purview than it is ours. Uh, we'll approve the contracts, but you will have the fees. How's that?
Can you bring that, can you bring that back up, budget time?
I suppose, is it next, are you looking to get, change it now or in the near future or next?
He's a financial consultant, so, uh, you can decide on when you want to do that.
So is that like two or three hundred dollars?
Per hour, yeah. Well, um, just, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I mean, we took, you took Erwin, Sheila, you took for all the sour studies. You took them under your wing because they more pertain to you guys and I, financial consultant also does.
Makes perfect sense.
So. And Pam, we do like you.
I know.
The commissioner didn't like you. That was it. That was easy. You can carry on and get this thing adjourned.
You want to make a motion?
Nope, I'm not making any motion. Well, it's getting paid. All right, so let's just, uh, let's solve it now. Let's make the motion to get the invoice paid, correct?
Well, if, if, can, may I speak?
Sure. Always.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to sound like an idiot, but Mike Royder, uh, works with the Auditor's Office a lot and it all is financial and budget and advice and my guess is over ninety percent pertains to the, the financial aspect of the county. So to me, it would only make sense that it be paid out of the council budget, so.
Will we be privy to the contract?
Those are public.
Be through Adam. Okay, and since he's your counsel also, yeah, I'm sure.
It will be.
Could that be distributed to us? But I have no qualms or problems, I mean, with going ahead with this. He's done a very, very, very good job for the county over the years. He's usually spot-on with his consulting and his forecasting. He's spot-on, so it gives you guys really good insight to move off of. I'm just sitting here trying to think what we could transfer to the commissioners, but.
Yeah.
We can, we can go all day long. We can keep coming back and forth. No, I'm, I'm all for it. I mean, the, the information that we deal with during budget time comes from Mike. He comes and gives us presentations for that, so anybody have any, uh, discussion that you'd like to?
I mean, it makes sense. Makes sense.
John, you're familiar with Mr. Roy, aren't you?
Yes.
So.
No, I, I, I agree. I think it makes sense.
So what is the, what is the motion that we need to make here to just transfer at this point in time from the commissioners to the council budget? And do we have the funds in the council that's now?
We do.
Yes, you have some, I think, budgeted forty thousand in professional service.
But does it have to come out of council budget? Can it go to the general or is there? You should have a professional services that it should come out of. And that's not. You have to ask for yourself for that.
So we ask for ourselves.
Agenda.
He has to be advertised and all.
Yeah.
Oh, it doesn't? Oh, I thought he said when we do an additional.
When.
Yeah.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll make a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and I'll be asking for another one.
No. Come back.
I got a question for Commissioner Walls. Uh.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I, what process do we need to do suggest, uh, the commit, uh, the commissioner's appointment to, uh, ARPA, which I, you heard that I suggested Pam. Uh, what do we need to do to make that happen?
I'll just relay that on to the other two commissioners and we'll see where that goes from there.
Okay, I didn't know if you had to do an.
I would like to discuss it with you further in private, please.
Okay, then we'll discuss it further in private, Pam.
Okay. I didn't have a chance to talk to her about it, so.
It's called a blind slide. All right, any other discussion? All, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Melinda, second by
Hey.
John Ed. Return. Thank you very much, new council.